We're gonna go off agenda a little bit. We're gonna start our meeting with a discussion in regard to the existing bond agreement that the board has agreed to at 2.5 million. There's potential to, through this discussion, determine whether we continue forward with a 2.5 million dollar bond or whether we reduce it and to come more aligned with what the expected costs are. And the reason this came about is that the voters approved a 3.5 million dollar budget at town meeting in March. When we went through the RFP process, the successful bidder brought in a number that brought that total down to 2.8 million. We were already authorized to draw a bond of 2.8 million, but given the reduced price, we thought it prudent to reduce it to 2.5 million. So that's where we are now. We're not committed to it. The paperwork's been submitted, but there's an opportunity to have a discussion as to whether we should consider reducing the bond amount and utilize more of the funds that we've saved through capital reserve and invest NH numbers and the undesigned, undesignated fund balance or keep it the way it is. And the board needs to make that determination tonight. So Steve, you're the leader of this potential opportunity to reduce the bond amount. If you could just come up here or there and help board members understand the due margins of your analysis.
I provided a copy of expenditures under the reduced bond assumption. At present, the paperwork and the amount approved by...
Is that this?
Yes, it is.
Does anybody want a copy? I have a copy. Jay, about a couple others if anybody wants. Two sheets.
One sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry. What I gave you, Jay, is two. We got too many sheets for all of them.
It doesn't have a crease and it is not real sheet.
This is simpler. Do we have other copies? I can get my copy.
One, please, roll over here.
Thank you.
At last week's board meeting, you approved the documentation for a bond of 2.5 million. During the week, I found out about it and I said, gee, we could lower the bond. And we scurried around and we found out we can do it if it's done right now. It works out that the bond could be reduced down to 2 million dollars. And this chart merely shows of a bond of 2 million dollars how we would pay for the project cost of 3 million dollars using all the other funds. And we do have a decision point with respect to either Shaheen's USDA grant or invest New Hampshire funds. And it could go either way, but we only keep one of the two to away from the project. To reduce the bonds is obviously a very good thing because this coming here, speaking from a CIPC viewpoint, we're looking at a bond for certainly DPW's new building or add-on and probably some work to Town Hall and a fire truck. So the lower the bonds are, the better it is for the town and frankly, the better that will present to the taxpayers next year that the select board has worked this project. The select board, Joe Russo, Lori, everybody else, has worked it to bring in a lower cost and it's showing good stewardship of the town's finances. I would recommend they could go down to 2 million. And I think you can do it. I don't know. Lori, have you drafted anything for motion? I think you could probably do a motion that would simply amend last week's motion to strike the dollar amount of 2.5 million and insert the dollar amount of 2 million. I think that would satisfy counsel.
You'd probably want to withdraw. You'd probably want to withdraw motion.
And redo all the wording from the motion.
Where would the balance of funding come from? Not just so people can hear.
The bond funding would come first from bond proceeds, which we would want spent first because we're paying the interest on it and earning virtually nothing. Second, from the capital reserve, which already has been drawn down in the amount of 500,000. And then 200,000 coming from either the USDA grant or the invest New Hampshire reserve. 150,000 from undesigned funds per the warrant article passed this March and 150 funds of 150,000 from general taxation funds per the warrant art, making 3 million dollars of sources and 3 million dollars of uses. And we estimate the project to be substantially drawn down except for, and it's a guesstimate of 200,000 pullbacks by December.
Joe, do you have any input on that?
My only concerns is the way the schedule has been going. Just worried that the potential for getting into winter conditions could drive the prices up a little bit, but I also still believe there's some potential to save in some areas there. The process hasn't been quite going as smoothly as I hoped, but I do have a little bit of reservations about how long this potentially get dragged out. We're hoping for a concrete plan so we can start by June 15th. It doesn't sound like that is going to happen. We're ready to start after getting the final design on everything and we can start working on it, but the longer we wait, the longer... If you run into an issue with any, no supplies, materials have been ordered yet because we're holding off on the design, but you could run into an issue with sourcing things, making it difficult to make the building water type by winter. Those are my reservations. But I do still feel comfortable that there's money to be saved on the, off the proposed bid.
How did you get the 3 million? That came up on 2.8.
I was given the number 3 million.
How did you get 2.8? I was like 2.5 or something. Wait, what's the extra money?
Well, there's, what we're spending going forward and then there's reimbursement for architectural and engineering costs incurred subsequent to town meeting. Now, I believe the 500,000 that was requisitioned from the capital reserve and paid covers architectural work mainly. So there's a soft cost there. There's, you know, you've got to watch, is it a cost going forward and is it hard or soft cost?
Well, we had a soft cost budget of 300,000. Then we have the budget from proposal from board of 2.5. If that's how I ended up at 2.8, am I missing something?
All, my role in the process is just the bidding. I don't know about the other costs with the architect or any of that. I come into it after the fact. My board's number is 2.25, I think, 3.6. Just a little over 2.5. I don't know about any of the other costs.
Well, how much are the, again, any cost?
175 and then there's engineering of 50.
So 225?
Yeah, and then they've got furnishings and that. And it ended up at about 300. And that 2.5 from Gordon, that was, that's already been reduced by the work that your team has done.
Correct. There's potential for more of that as well. Potential, but I don't, until I have a final design and approve site and we just, we can't get going on anything, but there is potential to save some more. Whatever's not used on the site from pop soil can be traded for a credit or some of the work paid and being done by the town's paid contractor is going to be more cost-effective than Gordon hiring to pay where they would read to let the town, which is all states, and all states decree that they would pay the mark on it at our bid for the year, which is a very, very good price. So there are some potentials that I just worry, like I said, with supply chain, we really need to get moving to be able to start ordering stuff and start doing some of the work so we don't run into an issue where we get into November, we don't have windows or doors and we have an open building.
I would point out also in this schedule, when I did it with reconciliation from the trustees basis, not necessarily their finance hazard, that the actual balance into the fire station capital reserves, 573,000. So there's 73,000 there that is in the fireplace, not fireplace, fire station capital reserve and that can be spent for any fire station in, for any capital reason. So you have another, say, 70,000 of extra money. Now, I'd like to see that capped because we have two other stations, other needs, but you have a fair amount of cushion. I wouldn't want to get the bond too low, but, you know, it depends on the cost.
Can I ask how much is NH invest?
433.
433, that's a lot.
The invest NH number of money is funds that the town received because the town approved the affordable housing project next to Gamarlo's and that was a project that came from New Hampshire housing, funding that came from New Hampshire housing through the legislative process. Other towns received it as well. The cap was a million dollars. We had, we have 84 units there, so we received 840,000. What the board has done with that money over the last year is utilize it to fund infrastructure projects. Other communities use the money to reduce their tax rate. We chose to use it for infrastructure. And so out of the 840, we have 433 left, 433,000 left and that's what Steve's referring to with the best NH. How confident are you with all the work you've done on the USDA grant from Shaheen's office to 200,000?
Everything seems submitted. I, I don't know. It's been a few years since they even applied and it was obligated at 200,000, but just, I don't know, especially with everything going on in the economy with them pulling back funding, you know, to local governments and state.
Okay, and that was 200?
And that's NH funds, those don't have to be spent on. I just spoke with the auditor actually before I came here and said those, if they're not spent, they will just roll over into the general pool, which you can also use to offset tax rate, obviously, but...
Yeah, so the 200,000 was money that Senator Shaheen's office had authorized, I think in 2023. It used to be called NH Mark. It's now called congressionally directed funding. And so that was money that we budgeted for in each of the warrant articles, but since we didn't prevail, we've just been hoping that that money would still be available. And now this time we did succeed and Lori and her team have filed all the paperwork appropriately to request that the money be made available. As she said, it's been obligated, but there's been no guarantee that it's going to be distributed. It is money that would hopefully be available. We would have to use that for the fire station, for anything else.
Mark? I, Joe's out of concern that it does overrun the winter to restart so late. Also concerned that the taxpayers ordered with the 2.5 and I think that's what we ought to spend, certainly use some of this other, as I said, if we have to find a bargaining here that maybe it, that since we are devoted to utility.
So, yeah, I'm just a little concerned that we have, we have the 2.5, Mark. We have the 500 in the cap, but we're safe. We're good, just like what everybody's done, right? We have the 400, the new...
Well, but also if that 200 comes in, we have no other use for it than...
Oh, we have no use because that's the only way that things end.
Yeah.
Okay, it's impossible that I can go into a cap because we have to use it.
Wait a second. Let me, I, it was a chart like this that I did earlier. If you keep the bond at 2.5 million, what we should have or shouldn't have is moved at this point. We have spent 500,000 from the capital reserve. The bond proceeds are going to become, are going to be 2.5 million. That's 3 million of money. And if we don't spend 3 million, we have a problem. And we have to go through an elaborate thing of escrowing funds or you can't just give back bond proceeds. It's a fixed rate bond. It's part of a larger bond bank bond. So it's really locked in and there's zero flexibility. So I think at a minimum, you should cut back a bit because we're danger, there's an equal danger that we can overfund it and in the process, we could possibly give up on a 200,000 dollar grant. So it's not really the safe way. Something less than 3 million is probably the safe way unless you want to spend more in gold plate fire station, which I don't think is appropriate.
I haven't listened to what happened.
What's we, what's not going to happen?
Yeah, we could overfund it, but put the bond alone. We know the bond we would spend.
You've already spent half a million. It's gone. So there's half a million of funds there. The bond will be another 2.5 million. That's 3 million dollars.
How did we spend the, did we allocate it in the cap?
It was authorized by the board for, Teresa gave the trustees a requisition for a half of million. I went in and asked her and said, you know, this money should go out last, not first, and we should deal with the bond proceeds first. And she replied that she needed the funds to close June. And with that, when I'm a trustee out of requisition, we, we paid it. So it's paid.
But what did it pay?
Architectural and engineering.
So what are you saying? Is that...
I understand.
All right, so...
I mean, I'm sorry, it's like the numbers.
You know, we didn't, we didn't even know that side yet. I didn't know that side of that, that we already spent that five. I'm thinking the opposite. I'm thinking we're going to spend bond money first and then we have that five.
As it should.
And now the half second is gone. Right, so that changes everything. I, but that wasn't...
That's why we're talking.
Okay.
You can use the leftover, if there's money left over in the bond, you can use it to lower the interest payments on the bond. So it wouldn't be going to waste. You would save money in interest by applying it towards the balance, towards the interest. You can use it to pay down interest on your loan payments.
Bond proceeds? I don't think that was in the bond resolution. And normally, when you do that, you have to set up an interest rate reserve.
Matt, I just spoke with Matt, our auditor, and he said you can do that.
I've done a lot of bonds and there's either an interest rate reserve or a reserve. Now, I have not done bond bank bonds, but I didn't read anywhere where there was capitalized interest, which is what you're talking about in this bonding. I, I would tend to doubt that. It would be good, but I didn't see it in the bond. And I'm not going to trust an auditor.
I know, I know Renell at the bond, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure, don't quote me, but I'm pretty sure that...
You're being quoted.
Teresa and, yeah, both had conversations with Renell at the bond.
With whom?
Renell at the bond.
How are they talking to Renell?
So let me ask this, Steve, if we don't get, all right, so right now, if we drop it to two, two million, right? You want to drop the bond to two million?
I, two, something like...
You already spent five.
2.25 was fine. 2.3? Pick a number. Spend a week. I, we have good news here, you know, and we've got a lot of bonds on the DACA for next year. Fire truck, DPW and probably some Town Hall.
So the total budget, you're thinking is three. I think it is less, but I believe you're thinking is three.
I was given three.
Yeah, so and 500 is what's spent.
So the engineering and arch, they're going to be paid?
I don't think so. It might be allocated, but I don't think they, they may perform. Chad's coming on Thursday and then he's done. M W is done, but the architectural is not completed. So they would probably be invoicing us the end of June. Together, probably. We probably need some partial payments for architecture and that's...
So if I'm understanding this correctly, 500,000 has been allocated, we're assuming it's been allocated, that includes engineering and architectural. What's the total number of engineering, architectural work on?
I've been working off of 300. Do you have anything different? It was what? It was the estimate or was the, it was in the contract, ACS, architects.
For architectural or architectural and engineering?
Oh, and included the furnishings.
Earlier, you were giving me a number of 225.
That's for the architectural and the engineering and then there were furnishings and some other listings that were, that were in there. So anyway, I'm wrong. If it's three and we've allocated five, spent five, we know we need 2.5. That's where you're talking because you know the 2.5 is going to be the last because of the work that you've done. So worst case is 2.5 even, even with weather conditions in any, not worst case, but likely if it wouldn't be more than 2.5. So out of the, out of the 2.5, we, we've got invest NH money, we've got unfunded balance, fund balance, we've got general taxation, which we've got, we've potentially got 200,000 from there. So it seems to me we could cut it back at least 2.2. Feel comfortable?
2.5. Well, if you, you're telling me just on the numbers, if it is cut back to 2 million, we have 3 million dollars of available funds. And you're saying the cost is 2.5 plus three, that's 2.8. So we have a cushion of 200,000. 200,000 would, you could just underfund general tax funds or designated funds, but prob, but probably, well, or invest NH, but not the grant.
First person, I prefer we hold on to invest NH as much as we can because it provides flexibility.
Well...
What we have is not allocated directly to the, that's why I find that's important too.
Well, you have, the amount coming out of it is 200,000. The bottom line is you have the possibility of 300,000 of, of funds to pay off 2.8 and you may underfund from either invest NH, undesigned funds or general tax funds, which is a total of 500,000. So you just pick which one. But I would submit that future payments on this be scrutinized a little more rather than just what actually is the thing, which that's my money. I mean, the bond proceeds should go out first.
Absolutely.
Now, we don't get bond proceeds until the middle of August, so...
We shouldn't incur any significant costs until then anyway because you'd be looking at concrete, you have to get building on the concrete. And that would be billable and, you know, some of it would have been prepaid or would it be end of August.
Probably the, probably the...
So we have the funds.
Your bond proceeds.
Yeah, so we really don't have any outlay coming up.
First, we'd probably come up with the, for some onsite, crush them with the gravel onsite.
You're going to do that?
But it's going to have a, it'll crush it, but it's going to have a cost.
Okay.
That will have a cost. But that, I believe it was 70 some odd thousand dollars in the bid for crushed gravel sold for the project. That's going to be cutting that half by, by crushing.
Sure.
How far, look, how far are you into this now that to turn this around now, this is going to be extremely, we have to pull back everything. You don't even know what you have against to do this, right? Is this ten weeks?
No, we only have till Monday.
Monday.
At the day of our task, we have, we have to bond on Monday.
And Renell, if we change it, Renell will start working on it tomorrow morning. He'll email it from now.
It's actually a good problem, you know?
I know, but I'm actually, I don't know if this is all worth, all this confusion for, for 200, $200,000 or a little more, you go to 2.5, where we have everything set and started, we have...
So you're suggesting 2 million is all it's...
Oh, go true, drop 5 million.
That's enough, maybe a dollar change.
Okay. And one other thing I'm concerned with is I was, I was hoping that we could keep that investment, you know, NH and leave that alone because that would have been helpful for any other work, right, in the future. I just don't know how much it's gonna, I know what your points are, that it looks great, that we are cutting the bond and everything, but I just don't think we're going to overdo it. I just think we're gonna be okay. I don't know. That's how I feel.
Well, the invest NH only gets spent if the grant fails. That's one point. The other point is... The other point is, if we fund at three million, which two point five million brings us to, the estimate, the real estimate that you're working with is two point eight, and you would not draw on the invest NH funds in that case. So you do get your cake and candy, if invest NH is what you want to keep.
Was the finance director consulted at all? Was Teresa, our finance director, consulted at all on this? I wish she could have been here.
She, she's asking if Teresa had any input?
Yeah, something here, here and there, but basically, these numbers come from a warrant card, there's no input that we had on them. You can only spend, let's put it, warrant card plan. And we had some question as to whether or not invest NH would qualify, but we got that by bond. But there, there's really no input from that. What I'd like to emphasize is, if you do this, you're gonna have to scrutinize which funds are drawn when, rather than just willing to.
If we stay at two point five?
Well, whatever you do, you gotta watch where the funds are being drawn from. If you stay at two point five, you're only gonna need bond proceeds, and then you're, if your numbers are right, you're gonna have two hundred thousand, too much. It's a simple math.
So we have two hundred thousand, too much, what happens?
Who knows that? No, can't go back.
It can't go back, that's the problem.
So what's the problem after that? What happens?
The basic problem is, you're overborrowing two point five. That's the basic problem.
Laurie's saying that two hundred thousand can be utilized to, to pay interest, not principal, but pay interest.
I would prefer.
Borrowing, paying interest, not to pay interest.
Teresa was in agreement, we just chatted, had chatted with her, she wouldn't be able.
I, I would have to verify that, I don't accept it.
What's that?
She doesn't believe that.
The bond proceeds can be used to pay interest.
I, I don't, to me, it's a moot point, I don't, I don't see Laura wanting to pay back, to be the payback interest on.
Well, people do do it, they say, create a, a fund called prepaid interest, and it's in the bond, that you can do, do that, there's nothing in the bond that says you can't. And in fact, you have to spend bond proceeds for what you say you're spending it for, or the bond will default. And the last thing that you want is two hundred thousand of excess bond proceeds. You probably have to.
Well, the other piece is, if, if I remember from our conversation, that we can't just do it, we have to go to the voters to get approval to do it, which just confuses everyone. If I was a voter, I'd be like, what, what is this about? But, so regardless, whether we can or we can't, we still have to go to the voters to do it.
Do what?
To. To take advantage of the prepaid interest. That's what it was, that's what I was told today.
It's not gonna be that much money, uh, because the only time you have prepaid interest is during the buildup. You can't use it for bond, well, you mean, use it for a stated period, if we build up and start. But you can't just keep on paying interest, I mean, that's just wrong, and it gets against the underlying law.
But we wouldn't be able to use it until we went to town meeting in March to get approval to do it.
Well, which makes it doubly moot, but I, it's, it's not gonna be that much money, so it's moot anyway. I think, at a minimum, you should cut the bond back by two hundred thousand. And I think the numbers indicate that you should cut it back to two million, and you will still have two hundred thousand in reserve.
If we're budgeting at three?
Yes. Because the census of the meeting is, the cost is two point eight.
Well, it is, but we're also anticipating about a two or three hundred thousand reduction from the work that DPW is doing. So it, it, it doesn't just stop at two hundred, but they, because a two point five, with Gordon Services doing everything, that they agreed to allow DPW to allocate the paving to, to our, our vendor, which reduces the cost of the paving. We're, we've already done a substantial amount of site work, a lot of work in terms of material that's on site, that there are, so chances are, we're gonna save three of the two point five to begin. So basically, our total budget's gonna end up around two point five.
Well, then, you have your excess funds, five hundred thousand, so you would, you would not use invest NH, you would have questionable use of the earmark, and you would use neither undesignated funds nor general funds. I mean, the hierarchy is, you have five hundred out, you have your bond proceeds, you spend those down. What portion of cost do they cover? And if they cover more than a hundred percent, you have a problem. Unless we can claw back the capital reserve.
I was just gonna ask you about that.
I don't know, Laurie, do you know?
I didn't even realize, sorry.
The, the questions I have, though, is that, that I don't think it was still on the table about, did we really allocate all the five hundred thousand, is it gone, is it paid, right? And then, the question is, can you pay back the interest with the bond? There's two questions out here, but it's gonna be hard for, to, to make a decision tonight, because we really don't have an excellent start right now.
Can we call Teresa while we keep going, to find out about that five hundred?
I mean, the five hundred, that's a big question. That, that's the big thing, at least.
Steve, you already had that conversation. I don't have another one. But you, you said, you said Teresa said that you've already expended the five hundred.
I, I was dealing as a trustee, my only concern was that you spend bond proceeds first, and she was pulling the whole five hundred K out, and it was authorized, so I was gonna pay it. But I mentioned it to her, and I said, can you skip it for a while? And she said, no, I need the funds to balance out June. And I didn't take it any further, because it wasn't my business.
Okay. Couple things, one is, um, the, the, the five hundred thousand, it looks to me like, if you don't get, don't get bond proceeds until August, the engineering and architectural bill will be due before then, and that five hundred thousand, I have to use to pay that?
No, the architectural isn't completed, and their, their schedule is August first.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that's good.
But the engineering.
Maybe, I was saying, maybe Teresa wanted the money, because there were some things that I couldn't do until August, she was pushing the bond. The other thing was, um, it seems to me that, as Steve points out, you, you have money besides the bond in the undesignated funds and general taxation funds, do you have to spend them?
No.
Because if you don't have to spend them, then that's, then that's sitting there to be used or not used, if you reduce the bond to two billion, then you've, you've, you've got this cushion there, if you say the cost has definitely come down, you're confident, though, that the cost is gonna come down, because of these things that Joe's worked out and so on, then you, you're looking at, uh, you're looking at enough reserve there already to cover, because you're gonna reduce the cost. And Steve's point about having the funds lower for the bond, so you don't, you don't overspend, don't have too much borrowed for the bond, is a good one, because if you, if you have the money anyway, you don't need that much from the bond. And, and, and remember, there's five hundred thousand dollars there, the investment for the USDA thing, plus a few hundred thousand dollars of the undesignated or general taxation, that's five hundred thousand dollars there. You're talking about maybe cutting five hundred thousand dollars from the budget in terms of savings, and, but it already happened, you're down to eight already, and he's got some more savings coming, it could easily be, be five hundred thousand off that anyway. So, it doesn't seem that this proposal is, is unrealistic, it sounds like it might be by default. And, and if you're worried about being out of money, and not having enough money to finish it, there, it, it's better, I think, the town, like you do physically through, or not, and, and so if we have to cut something from the fire station, I'm not gonna do that, of course, but I don't think that's gonna happen, based on what you said. The only other wild card is logistics costs, are they gonna go up?
That's, and, and that's what Joe's referring to, with the timing, with the architectural.
I think.
But logistics costs are gonna go up, maybe you're better, in, in that sense, that's the argument for saying, saying at the two point five million, because then you're, you're building in a potential rise in cost.
That's, my trepidation with the whole thing is, like I said, initially, we thought we were gonna have a concrete plant June fifteenth, and we were going, going to be able to start working, uh, but the potential for tariffs, the potential for supply chain issues with getting materials, so the big thing with tariffs and winter costs, which could drive the cost of the project up, those are, as a project manager, those are concerning. And that, that, that's my trepidation about lower things, but.
You know, we added a line, but if, if we just stuck with the two point five, we used the two point five, we had that money at the end of this whole project, we had that money at the end of the whole project, and then we go for a lower bar next year that we need for Joe's then, and we go for the lower bar then, why are we pushing this and taking all these chances, when we can just do it, get the lower bar next year, and, and come in and say, hey, we only need this to do this?
You're, you're saying, use the undesignated funds and general taxation funds, just carry it over to use next year?
Exactly. I mean, we have, it's there, I mean, why are we putting, why are we rolling the dice anyways on any of this?
If the tax money doesn't get spent, is it gonna be undesigned?
Jimmy, you're rolling the dice by overfunding. That's the greater danger.
But we don't know that, Stevie, we don't know the answer to what, what Laurie said, and we don't know the answer to the five hundred thousand.
It doesn't matter, we know we have five hundred thousand.
But if it's already spent, it's gonna make it harder to spend the dollars. But if it isn't spent, we can spend the whole bond and hold that five hundred thousand, is what I'm saying, Teresa, but, so there's the question, man, that we're, we're still unsure, am I correct?
It was withdrawn from the trust to be spent on a fire station. If you can claw that back, fine, I'm happy with the two point five. If you can't claw it back, the greater danger here is overfunding.
Who's this here? Who knows the future, call it's right to do. Well, I'm in favor of cutting it back at least to two point two, if not two point one. We, I'm, I'm frightened by Joe, that we're gonna be under two point eight, so that.
Under two point eight, including the architectural, engineering?
Yeah, because I, I think you've been very confident of Cody's estimates right, right from the get-go, and, we know this all costs are firm at three hundred, that's already budgeted, so that's two point eight, and, and Steve's numbers are based on three million, so we've already got a cushion of two hundred thousand for, for any, any overruns that, that are incurred. Winter costs, we, we have to have something catastrophic, which could happen, how do you plan for this? But, uh, the likelihood is, we'll get the trust, and we'll get the windows, and we'll be up and running.
So, taking the, beginning early, the architect fees out of that Gord's number of two point five three six, there's a two hundred thousand dollar cushion on that two point five three six, I think that's comfortable, the sooner we get going on things, the more comfortable I can be about saving money with it.
But his two point five is already local, because you've already done a substantial amount of work.
Not substantial, but it's probably about, I don't know, well, well, substantial when you're looking at the site numbers for one of the other contractors, not substantial with Gord's, a substantial savings if one of the other contractors is gonna do, but Gord's number's lower. But there's thirty-five thousand dollars to be saved in the period by crushing the gravel, there's thirty-five thousand or thirty thousand dollars to be saved with using a different type of insulation that still needs the same R values, put in a request over two weeks ago, trying to get an answer back, but we don't get anything back, no answer back on that. So right, right there alone, the gravel and the insulation can be a seventy thousand dollar, uh, savings. The water line was changed to HDP, which is a common standard we're using on a lot of our projects, instead of duct line, it was approved by SLY and the LAR president, that right there is a eleven or twelve thousand dollar savings, so that, so there are.
You got the paving.
The paving, paving, which probably, I, I, I don't wanna quote that without looking at the quantities, but you're looking at basically paying a hundred dollars a ton versus a hundred fifty dollars a ton, so there, there's a savings there, uh, there's savings in, in trading, uh, trading excess topsoil for credit, uh.
So we got at least a hundred thousand of what we know is coming, plus the word that you've already got, you've got to save fifty to a hundred.
I wouldn't say that, no, not fifty, a hundred.
But with what you've got planned?
Oh, with what I got planned, yeah, with what I got planned, like I said, I've got, yeah, a hundred and change, and potentially more, but, once again, we're, we're putting in requests and not getting answers back.
Jim, I think you're thinking that if we keep the bond, we'll, we'll kitty with all the other funds, and that's not so. Yes, if you don't spend the invest NH funds, you do have it in a kitty. But the other three hundred thousand are, yeah, three hundred thousand of undesignated funds and general tax funds expires. You can't draw that money down and use it for a separate project. So, the kitty's not as big as you think.
So you're saying that we have to use two point to not overbought, then? We'd have to use, right? Because you're gonna have the three hundred, we're gonna add the two point five, right?
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go back to.
Can I go through the numbers again? If we borrow two million, we have already taken down five hundred thousand, we have two point five million of sources of funds. The project cost, and I think the consensus number is two point eight with cushions, do we agree to that?
I do.
Mark?
So you're saying we have two hundred thousand in cushion money?
So we would have two hundred thousand in cushion, and that happens to be the amount that we want to save, which is invest NH money.
We've already said we don't want to spend, and we don't know whether we're gonna get the USDA, even though it's allocated to us, we don't know the current situation, whether we're gonna get that money.
From the federal government, they're, they're helpless.
Yeah, that's my concern.
So, those are the numbers I can. As far as the paying interest on it, it's not gonna be that much money, and I have grave reservations about doing it, despite the auditor's insistence.
So, even simpler than that, we have, if we're two million dollar bond, we've got five hundred thousand in capital reserve, that's two point five, if we utilize all the invest NH, and we didn't touch the fund balance, we didn't touch the, I didn't take any money from general taxation, we're at two point nine and change, because the fund balance is four thirty-three. I mean, not the fund balance, the invest NH. No, no, two, two million for the bond, five hundred from the capital reserve, four hundred thirty-three from the invest NH, we're at two point nine. Okay, and we haven't touched the fund balance. Yeah, so, I'm, I'm with you, right? Could it happen that we spend more? Could it happen that we spend more than three million? Pretty unlikely. Or could it happen? But I don't think you can much afford for that, with the budget with what we know.
With adequate cushion, but, you know, all said and done, we have about a eight percent cushion here. And, what's built into the budget with a cushion.
Well, most of our large scale road projects, the M models, we carry a ten percent contingency.
Twelve, ten percent is two fifty, or, or three million.
I hope we'll get this whole thing before this evening come out, okay? Cause while we came in at two point five, we get the bond, we're gonna pay. We're gonna pay, right? We're gonna have that money set aside for a nice cushion, that five hundred thousand, you know what I mean? And then the four hundred, they agree, we got that, we go into next year, we have the money, we can buy in the budget, we present it. That was my whole, look at this whole thing. Now, we throw this curveball into this, right? And you want me to sit here and make that, a decision to cut this bond, five hundred thousand dollars, not actually knowing that we did spend five hundred thousand, right? And not knowing what Laurie's idea is, right? And, we've already heard from the taxpayers at the town, this is what they voted for us to do, and we're gonna flip and have a hot time, right?
But, the, the five hundred in the capital reserve is not a cushion. We can't use it for something else.
I understand that, thank you. But we have to have a fire truck, and we have to have something.
But it's not that, it's a fire and a station. It's not, it's not equipped, but it has to go, five hundred thousand, looks like a lot of money to leave in there. That's, that's.
Yeah, but we got three other fire stations.
You can't take the five hundred and buy a fire truck.
Okay, I get that, all right, shouldn't have said that, I knew that, I knew that, I didn't mean that. But, there is gonna be actions that, the fire station is probably gonna be down the line. What, what, how would that hurt to have that, in that fire station, capital reserve?
It's out of the capital reserve, it's, it's in the general fund. But it's earmarked for.
Fire stations.
For.
Fire stations.
One, one question, Steve, the undesigned funds you said would be gone if we don't spend them? What, that means they have to be reauthorized by voters to some other project, right? They're still in the house.
They, they are only authorized to be withdrawn for the fire station.
Right, so they are.
If they're not withdrawn, it's not a void, they stay as.
They stay there, and voters are about to authorize them for some other project.
Correct.
So, we're not losing them, are we?
No. Nor are we losing general tax funds that we spend with general fund.
Right, so I, I like your proposal, Mr. Peter, not that I'm mad at you guys, but.
Your opinion matters, okay? As was everyone else's. You'd like to see a cut by five hundred in the bond?
I, I think you have enough cur, enough cushion here to cut it down to, to two million, like Steve's talking about. Again, that's, the only wildcard for me is the materials costs. And, and, and to see them go up astronomically, where we'd be in trouble? I'd like to say we, we could, we could bet on that, I'd have.
I'd like to see it cut. I think, uh, getting back to the taxpayer could really be the whole, right? Went for two point five million, looked, bid came in a lot less than what we thought. Wonderful problem to have.
And so, you first.
So, the bid came in for a lot less money than what we thought it would be to, to build the fire station. It's a great problem to have, and the fact that you're, you know, taking on a smaller bond because of that, that's, that's good news for the people of Slade.
It chooses good news coming in, two point five, instead of three point five, which the taxpayers expect it to. Still, it's the bottom line for bottom line, right? No matter how we come out at the end.
Yeah, I, I don't.
You know?
Well, the way I look at it too, is, is speaking forward, we're gonna build trust with the voters. That when we go and ask for something, we're gonna put it in the bu, in the budget or under the budget. And that's what we have to do, we have to build trust with the voters, that we know what the heck we're doing.
But how are we giving up trust by not spending, when it's not for spending?
When they know we came in under budget, or with Steve's proposal, then they're gonna say, hey, we gave them two and a half million dollars, they came in under that. Okay, so they're gonna be more likely to vote bonds down the road that we need, okay? Cause they're gonna trust us better. There's a lot of, if you read the social media outlet, there's a lot of mistrust in the town government right now. We need to build that trust back to the voters, and I think this one.
We're gonna be able to get up there and stand up and say, we, we, we put down the three and point five, but we only spent two point five. No matter whether we bonded it or we saved it.
Right.
You know, whatever, what money we use, I don't think that we're gonna lose trust from, is what I'm trying to say.
Jim, there is such a thing as a financial plan for a town. And, it's a delicate matter where you have to schedule out how much debt you're going to put on the books over a period of time. You cannot move money in little pots from one year to the other, and one project to the other. So, next year, we're gonna come with a fire truck bond and a bond for other town buildings. One will probably be seven hundred, and another eight or nine hundred. So, if we can, and, and, based upon what Michael said, you know, if, I would much rather come to the town and say, look, we said we needed two point five, but we only needed two. Joe needs nine hundred thousand. So, really, we saved more than half of the cost of BPW's new building. I think that's a better argument than trying to sneak money around here and there, which is a policy that I don't think is good public policy. Uh, I would like to see us save the invest NH money as much as we possibly can. Uh, the rest all fades, goes away into the ether. So.
Well, there's also debt service, and that's what, when you start the CIP in August and September, one of, one of the numbers that Steve will run for you, will show you what our debt service is. And it, and without this, our peak is what, twenty-seven or twenty-eight? And we hit our peak for, for debt service before it's ever setting down.
The capital that the town uses, uh, from CICC is defined as what's going in with capital reserve funds, cash, plus annual debt service. Because it's those two numbers that go straight to the tax rate. So, when you're looking at the capital cost to the town, is the cash cost during the year, and the debt service that they're going to pay. So, uh, you know, more debt services forever, and it's fixed, or for a long time. And if we were crisis, you know it's cut back in cash, you can't cut back on your debt service. So, you're trying to keep it low. And it's probably higher than I'd like it to be, but we have a lot of catch-up here to do. Lot of catch-up.
Anyone else have some words of wisdom?
You're the guy who makes the big bucks, so. It's up to you.
I think you made a compelling argument, and I, I'm in favor of cutting it back to two million. Mark?
So, I'm just, I'm still concerned about, whether we get the plans in time, whether we get materially the cost that we wanna get it at. And, I guess that's a concern, is, why do we mind about this like yesterday or today and not weeks ago?
It's the way it happened, first.
You wouldn't have found out unless Bill and I had lunch. This week.
Maybe we should all have lunch. Well, actually, you have a better explanation tonight than I, than I.
Worst case, we know we're gonna have the drawings April, or August first. That's the worst case.
The first or was it the fifteenth?
No, fifteenth is the start.
Okay, okay.
So, August first is the last.
Absolute worst. July thirtieth is the, is the worst for the concrete. So, we, we, we know we have concrete in the ground by the end of September. Hardly, you got, the rebar plan will be back.
You got concrete, yeah, I mean, you're, from the day we get the site plan approved, and the concrete rebar then approved, I think all these foundation will be.
So, the site plan will be approved tomorrow, and then, we're, we're waiting on the concrete plan. And so, if it comes in at the end of July, which is the worst case, it's cheaper than us.
We have a, we have approved site plan, and I have documentation from the architect that's saying those elevations aren't gonna change. Uh, then I have documentation from our, then I went to a comfortable start on the site. I would not start the site until confirmation from her. We go do something with elevations, and then, the design is changed in some way that changes the elevation, it can really cause problems.
Well, the elevation of the building isn't gonna change, because that's what's being presented, it's what's been presented at the AA, so that, that is not gonna change.
Yeah, I would want that right from the architect before I would start.
So, you can submit, Chad, you can submit at AA, so you do the, the, the.
But as far as the elevations of the foundations, the, the top of the building, that's, that's, that's like, that's what they're concerned about, but as far as the elevations for foundations, floors, and stuff like that.
So, the worst case on that is the end of July. Really, that's, the, the, August first are, are final drawings to do, so the end of July. So, by the end of August, we have concrete, and you, and Cody will be starting with the frame. I don't think we're gonna hit runner conditions. I hope not. He, he, he gave you a month to add all frame and, and roof, so, that's the end of September. By early October, he's putting the leos in and stuffing on the inside.
The only thing that could delay weather for you is, is, you know, we, we sent an email over two weeks ago, asking about windows, doors, and trusses, cause those are all issues. That those are all items that could become supply chain issues, and we have not heard a response back on that. But that would make everybody, subcontractors feel a lot better about purchasing those items, getting those items ordered and started. Uh, there's gonna be another email going out tomorrow about a generator, we could, we're authorized to purchase a generator, uh, because one has become available at a decent price, and it's available, and we wouldn't have to wait on. So, those are all items that, that could take our.
Well, you and Laurie make a good tandem, seems like you get responses from, from John and Katie when you work together.
Laurie does, I don't, I don't, they don't, they don't like to respond to me.
So, tomorrow, we can get that all rolling and get a response. Cause you've already, he, he already presented to them the vendors that he wants to use. So, they already have that information, and they know, the only, the only specs that light it up for reconsideration would have been the trusses. And, and that should, that being, it was a month ago, so, that engineering work should be complete by now. Should be.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
All right, boys. This is where you put, put them on, this is why you're sitting here. I, 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 I think Jay and Mark, Steve, you make compelling arguments, we've got the funding available. I, I don't wanna be on the receiving end of why did you borrow two point five when you only needed two? And now you got excess funds, I don't wanna be there personally. I, I'd love the opportunity to go back to the voters and say, we, we asked, we legitimately asked for two point eight in the warrant I wrote, and we came in at two, that, that basically funds Joe's bond next year.
I, I'm absolutely non-plus, boy, you're so troubled by good news.
Well, it's because it's a, it, there's still the what ifs, but.
Well, there were the what ifs when we did the first budget, and it could have been wrong.
Correct, and it was, it was high, so.
Well, it could have been low.
Could have been, but fortunately, so far.
I mean, I had my moments when tariffs started coming in and stuff, and, uh, I mean, the numbers are pretty straightforward.
I agree, I don't see the value of overborrowing, hey, if you're going over the voters, and because we made, because we overborrowed, now we're asking the voters to allow us to use that money to pay back interest that we're not even sure we can do.
Could be the first time I was, saw it done on bond, but what am I, I only did it for thirty-five years.
So.
You wanted the job, Laurie.
Yeah.
Feel comfortable with the number, it's not too many, but not two point five?
No, I, I see the point, and there might be parts of this on this, and I understand that. Steve does have the knowledge of this, but I'm just, you know, wondering if this is all necessary. We're not, I'm not worried about losing confidence of the taxpayers, because I know bottom line, we're sitting here doing the right thing, we're coming on the budget, we're fighting fire. I don't need to, to say to the taxpayers that, you know, prove that, you know, we're here, right here, we're doing it, we're coming on the budget. But, um, I just wanna make sure that this is all worth it, to, to do it this way versus having our money saved. That's what I'm trying to say. Put the building up, use the bond, we pay our payments, and then we have all this money that we can go to the tour next year. Is where I look at it, okay? But, I know what you're saying, some of that money's allocated, it's already gone, right? You already said that it's gone.
Or it's allocated, but it can't be used for anything else.
Five hundred, the four thirty-three, thirty-eight, four thirty-four.
No, it couldn't. No, it can't.
The four thirty-four.
Oh, oh, the four thirty-four, yes. But the three hundred goes away. And the shitting granite that comes in goes away.
If we overbond.
So, as far as authorizations go, you're looking at, you know, half a million bucks there.
It's not a pocket change.
Well, Ms. Town Administrator, what are your thoughts?
I don't think we'd agree with me, but I've only been here for a month, um, just having an inside look at the reserves and the budget. Um, I think I, this board has been diligent already about, you know, giving money back, and we've cut, cut it down to two point five, um, and that's great, so that's already a savings there. Um, be basically responsible, but I think I would play it safe. Um, I'm, I'm just not comfortable, cause there's so many unknowns, and I, I think it's a little bit risky. So, I'd probably play it conservative, and just, the voters approve the two point five, go with that, and then, um, if there is money left over, you can, you can use it for another project, or, like I said, you can. You have to go back to the, if there's money in an account, you, you can put it.
If it's bond proceeds, you may not, period, or you will default on the bond.
You have to bring it to the voters.
No, it's in the bond covenants. Take that to the bank. Bonds require a statement of purpose, and if you violate that, you default the bonds, and the bonds become taxable. Take it to the bank. That's true.
So, it's one, one other way to put it. One other way to put this is that right now, we have a two point five million bond authorized. We have five hundred thousand dollars already designated. That means we have three million dollars we're committed to spend right now. If the budget is gonna be less than three hundred million, then we've overbonded. It's that simple.
Amen, that's simple.
Well, that doesn't include.
Cause we have to spend that three million.
That would have never happened if we did not be spending five hundred thousand. It's like commitment is tonight, Jay.
But, I think some of those expenses were expensive, occurred between March and now. So, that, that had to be, we couldn't have the bond proceeds then, so we had to spend the money then. I'm, I'm assuming that's what happened, that's why she wanted the money.
Stay.
Right, so, we're stuck. We have, at this point, we have three hundred million, three million dollars that we're committed to spend. And if we think the budget, if we think we're gonna spend less than three hundred million, then we need to cut back on the bond, or we'll end up, as Steve said, having to put gold plating on the fire station.
And we won't be able to spend the two hundred thousand.
And you won't be able to spend the two hundred thousand. So I, I think it's just, you add the five hundred, our investment plus the two and a half million that's, that's on the table right now.
Bonds ain't free, remember? So we go for another bond, we're gonna pay for another bond, right? We're gonna pay more interest on another bond, remember that? So we're, versus if we save, you know, we have all this money, we didn't spend the five hundred, we could, we could be actually sitting on a million dollars next year in our hands, not bonded, in our hands. I'm paying interest on payments.
Jim, that five hundred thousand is only able to be spent on fire stations. You can't take it over and buy a fire truck with it. You, you can't take it over and build a DPW to build it with. So it's very narrowly focused. And it was, in fact, ready for the new fire station. So this, this bucket of money that you think you have.
Wait a minute, back up a second. I thought that money that we had to be saved in the past years, that we were putting a hundred fifty thousand away a year for so many years, and that's where that money came from.
That's what he's saying.
That's exactly what he said. So the fire station was happening.
That's correct.
But he just said we, we actually put that money away for the fire truck. So we can't stop.
I said you can't buy a fire truck.
Oh, it was, it was established.
Yeah.
Your little pot of gold here is not really there, except for invest in age. That we think we can keep anyway, okay? Uh, I would go so far as to say, in my view, borrowing two point five is uh, the riskiest and improper DC, D, decision here. The risk of overfunding is far greater than the risk of underfunding.
Totally agree. I, I totally agree. I don't see, I don't see, I think it's a compelling argument that's, that's being made. If, if there was flexibility in the funds, it would be different. If, if we could go back to the voters, let's say we have a half a million dollars left over, can we allocate that money to a new DPW? That, that would be great, but as Steve said, it's in the resolution. We can't do that. We can't.
We can't really go back to voters. Like, it was just on the warrant article in Ridge. I worked with Renell, I worked with, um.
With bond proceeds, you change the use of a bond?
I'm trying, with leftover bond money, if you have.
You change the use. It's the first time I've ever heard it, no.
You have to bring it, you have to bring it to the voters. You can't just spend it wherever.
I.
So, just an example, Ridge has sixty thousand dollars sitting in, um, from a consolidated bond for fiber or whatever it was, sixty thousand dollars. And the auditor said, you need to move that money, you need to move that money. So that was one of the first jobs I had. He was, okay, let's spend the money. So we had to put a warrant article, um, to the voters and, um, no taxation, obviously, and you want to use the money for another project. It has to be infrastructure, I think it was. I can't find the R S A.
Well, was the bond for a specific project?
Yes, it has to be used. That's part of the R S A. It has to be used for this specific project and it has to go on the ballot. And it failed in Ridge, so the money was still sitting there on unused bond proceeds instead of putting it towards the DPW project or whatever projects it was.
Well, what was the original intended of the bond?
Um, fiber, fiber optics, I believe.
I just have never heard of it and I would not.
But I think you had the, the right answer there. It was, it was infrastructure related. So the, the wording of the, the resolution for that bond could have been broader than simply, um, funding fiber.
This was for the fire station, period. And I've never seen a bond taxed, takes that bond change.
What do people do then when they have leftover bond money?
They're screwed.
No, they're not. Why are you screwed?
You, you can only spend it for that purpose.
Unless you bring it to the voters and ask for something else.
I've just never seen that.
It can be gotten. I did it. I went through the process.
My, my name is Marty Rose. I've dealt with town governments and that.
Just need your, didn't hear your name, sorry.
Marty Rose. Uh, she, she's a hundred percent correct. They bring it to a warrant, it's raised.
Just need your spelling of your last name.
R O S E, just like the foul.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
She's a hundred percent correct. It, it, I've dealt with situations where there was bond money raised for building a police department. There was excess funds. That goes back and it's re-appropriated through voting through the townspeople and, and, and on the warrant article. It, it happens all the time in town government. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also think that you should err on the side of the DPW supervisor and what his rules are. That shows a lot of trust in government. Head of police.
Well, there, there's a lot of trust in the.
Oh, I just heard a lot of people talking about trust and transparency. I just, I understand completely. No, but you have a hundred percent cushion.
Now, if you, you say that, say you're right, okay? And you're talking about we're rolling the dice for us, overbonding, okay? And that's true. So overbonding would not hurt us. It would not hurt us. So we're not rolling those. I think we're rolling the dice the opposite way. I disagree. Because if this is true, am I right, and he's right? We have no problem. Why are we, why are we doing this? For, for two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand, or two hundred, you know, whatever, or even a half a million? Why do we wanna put this on the table now, have her go through all this when we have the taxpayers voting? And we can keep our money. I, I just, it's confusing to me when we got so many unanswered questions, Bill. I mean, now I see a scary mess and if this is true, there's no risk of overbonding. So we overbonded, so what? We go back to the people, now we got that money, we use it for something else. We still could go and try the taxpayers and say, listen, we took the bond out, we didn't even use it all. We got this.
Now we're gonna use it to pay for something else.
Now we're gonna use it to pay for something else, so we don't have to get another bond because, right, and pay for another bond. I don't know, that's, that's how I look at it. I'm saying, bonds cost money too and a lot of work, okay? We have this money left over and they're, and he's speaking to him, he's shaking his head yes, he sounds pretty confident. I, I, it's hard for me to sit here and make that decision of cutting this bond. I think it's more of a risk the other way. Sorry, I think you, sorry, I feel bad.
The, in, in terms of going back to the voters, the project has to be completely funded. So in order to go back to the voters for twenty-six, what's our deadline to, to get a warrant article? Petition warrant article is, um, middle of January, so we, assuming it was done by, complete and everybody's paid. By the end of December, we have two weeks to get a warrant article.
It's R S A thirty-three, colon, three, dash, A, Roman culture, unused bond proceeds.
What is it?
That's R S A, that you.
Unused bond.
How does it, how does it word it?
Well, this was a warrant article that I passed to the town.
So anyway, unless everything fell into place, we're not going back to the voters at twenty-six. We'd be going back to the voters at twenty-seven.
So we gotta hold that. So what would happen, they'll, uh, set the money, set the, money set.
Until the town tells them what you're applying.
You're sitting paying interest on a, a bunch of money at, say, three or four percent, you're earning half a percent off. So you're losing three and a half percent each year.
Which we would if we got in on the bond to pay for Joe's thing.
No, we wouldn't.
But we don't, you're losing. It's money you're losing.
Alright. Mike, who are you? We know where Bill stands. Stop putting it in there. If you wanna go with it, I'll, I'll, if you wanna go with it, I'll put it. I trust, I'm, and I'm not backing Steve at all. I know Steve's a very smart man, yeah. Very intelligent and I don't wanna back him. This is the way to go. I don't have enough knowledge. I just look at things. I do have my own business. I know it is big. It's a town. I do deal with grants in my pack. I, I do, I'm not just buying cameras, so, you know, I understand Steve. I'm just giving my point of it, okay? But I understand Steve. Probably got much more intelligence value when it comes to the capital and I give that to him. So I don't wanna hurt the common anyway, but I just, you heard my side of it, I guess. So Mike, it's up to me and you, would you?
Instead of an absolute, would you consider a middle ground? We, we know we got excess.
Well, let me hear, where, where are you at, Mike?
I, I think Steve is saying the way it is now. Like, will we vote for it? You know, I get it. So, so what do we get? And if we can spend the money later, even if it's twenty twenty-seven, we're still gonna pay out of something else down the road. So if I were to lose, I'd give whatever I have interest on it, I'd pay off the loan. But I would hate for, if it funded, then we don't have enough money to fund it because something popped up and we had less money than we already. And so the fire station, you know, nothing, I'm gonna get doors or something, but so we can't buy something that should have been there and we don't have the money.
So how much excess money do you want?
Not, that's the goal, all right?
Well, not at, not at the rate we're going. We already know, we already know we have almost a ten percent cushion. We already know that. We've got a million dollars in, in available funds. If we go at two point five, we know we're overfunding it by five hundred based on the information that we have. That's, that's pretty, pretty, pretty clear. We have the money. People have been saving. With, 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 with the two, with the two million dollar bond and the five hundred for the fire station, that's a two fifty. And then we got to fund three hundred thousand. We gotta find, fund five hundred thousand, worst case scenario. We, we've got that money. We got three hundred between the unfunded or the undesigned, unbalanced and, and taxation. And we could pull two hundred out of investment Hampshire. If we get the two hundred from the, from the feds, then we don't pull any money out of investment Hampshire. If it comes in like we think it's gonna come in under two point eight, we're not even touching the, uh, we don't have to go to the general tax, uh, tax, uh, money that was allocated. We don't have to go to the front balance. We know we're overfunding it by a substantial amount. I'm just asking, if, if the five hundred is too much, would you consider something in the middle?
Can't ask the floor.
Sure.
Just out there, could I get a raise in hands to Steve? What we'd like to see is changing to, 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 to decreasing? Mike, you don't want us to decrease it?
Well, I was just asking Joe where he's comfortable at. That's, that's the biggest, yeah, that's it.
Well, we have the money.
Right. But where's Joe comfortable at as far as the spending thing goes?
I'm just being comfortable, man.
As far as the project goes, um, I think, like I said, the ten percent contingency is the standard. Uh, Gordon, taking the engineering and so forth out of it is, is a minimum ten percent contingency off your two point five three six number for the construction. I don't think so. I was not privy to the engineering. I was not privy to anything with the bond. That's the number I need to build the thing.
Three million dollars. That's without us, without you doing any, it's three million dollars. Without you doing the asphalt, without, without you doing some of the site work, without crushing the ground, it's, it's two point five. And then with the ten percent is two seven. That's without you doing any.
So, so the voters approved, what we presented to the voters was three and a half million for the station. Voters approved that. The, the bid came in, seven hundred thousand dollars less than.
More than that.
More than that.
Well, based off, it's part of the three point five carried the three hundred thousand in soft costs.
Yes, it did.
The limited construction based on that would have been three point three.
Okay, so it, it came in.
Seven hundred thousand.
Came, came about three, four hundred thousand dollars less than what was there. And that, that warrant article didn't include the, uh, the, uh, uh, what are the, what's that? What's that called there? The four, four sixty-three, whatever is the, uh, the investment Hampshire funds. It didn't include the investment Hampshire funds. That's your, that's your backup. What I'm saying is, you, you were able to get through the bidding process lower than what the voters approved. So why not turn that back into reducing the overall budget for the proj, project? Why keep the budget the same when the bid came in so much lower?
Reduce the debt.
Reduce the debt. And that's, that's money that, that's money that we're debt servicing every year.
Don't keep the debt in order to hold on, don't keep the debt in order to hold on to it for a year, year and a half and use it for something else potentially down the road, just.
I think Bill made a good point that, that if we, if we did, if we are able, and it sounds like we might be able to use unused bond funds later, we won't be using it in twenty twenty-six. And that just means we're carrying that, that debt service longer than we should. Not only carrying more than we should, but carrying longer than we should.
That's, that's bad.
I think that's crazy. Keeping excess bond proceeds for an ex, for an extra year, year and a half. It's just crazy.
I personally don't think we're gonna, I think we're gonna use it. But we'll go from there. We'll see when this is over, the paydown two, we're gonna use it. And I guarantee we'll use that bond.
We're gonna use the bond.
It's not a joke, I'm gonna use it.
It's a question, I don't know.
But I think we'll be used to two point five. How? Cause I'm not sure about if we can get that five hundred there for the, in the capital. Will you get that back?
It has to be. It's, it can only be spent for the fire station.
I know that, I've gathered some, I don't say it can be spent.
It, it has to be. It can't be spent for anything else.
And it can only be spent for other fire stations, I.
It was established to build a new station because we wanted to use it to defray the cost of the bond. It's the same thing as what we're doing with the ambulance service by setting money aside just to help to, to spread the pain out over the future before we don't do it in full.
But you can see it does, just by the floor here. You saw the floor.
It's not a tough decision.
There's a lot of people that do see this, I mean, this isn't just Jimmy Tom.
Well, this, well, we asked.
It feels like it's Jimmy Tom Pester here.
What about Mark?
Well, Mark.
What about Mark?
Bill, will you ask the question, who's for keeping it at?
I'm not being allowed this.
At two point five? You didn't ask that.
I didn't ask anything. You're talking about the floor?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Do your straw call.
What, what, what you like, man?
Who's for keeping it at two point five?
Larry? I don't know. He's asking the floor. You already backed very, very.
So it pretty much evenly split between those who voted for the reason.
Yes, but it's a, Mike, I'll follow you. If you, no, if you really wanted to, if you're done with and move it. We'll, we'll see what I, I'll follow. I understand what I, I think we should keep it the same.
I did tell you I'm formed on it, but to speak more, I just read the R S A, uh, the, the Hampshire R S A thirty-three A, which is part of municipal finance, uh, the statute outlines how unspent funds from the initial bonds or notes should be handled. If no expenditure has been made or a balance remains after a project is finished, these unspent funds can be repurposed for other uses. That bonds or serial notes could fund for a comparable or longer duration. This requires a two-third vote from the city council or town district voters or a three-five vote in political subdivisions using official ballot voting. If these funds are not re-appropriated, they must be used to pay down the principal of the loan as it matures.
At least, we, we know what it is. We know what a sixty percent vote is. If it's not well, if it's not well defined, people are, you, you gotta get sixty percent.
It will be well defined, we don't tell me.
We thought we had a lot of stuff well defined. It, it didn't come through and now you're setting up money for things.
If, if they don't approve it, then it goes to reduce principal, but it'll take a good many years to pay off that principal and it'll be sitting there the whole time. It's, 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 you're knowingly going into an overfunding and I think that's bad policy. And I don't think squirreling away funds from this project for a future project is good public policy. I, I think each project should, wait, I think each project should stand on its own. And the credibility of the town adds to whether or not the project passes or fails. But I, I, I just think each project stands on its own. And I think going into a project knowingly overfunding it is wrong, period. And I don't think you need anything else on there.
No, but we appreciate you, but very helpful. You're uncomfortable at two. You know you're overfunding it two point five. Would you consider something in the middle?
You're uncomfortable at two, you know you're overfunding it two point five, would you consider something in the middle? You, you got, you know you got close to two million that you're gonna be electing for in the next couple of years in the town ball and for D P W. Just staying at two point five, like the arguments today, we don't need the two point five, that's not even a worst case, that's grossly overfunding. Just with the two point five and the five hundred thousand, which is a three million, that's worst case scenario, three million, and we haven't touched the unfunded balance, we haven't touched taxation. We haven't touched the two hundred thousand from the, um, from the congressional direct designated, or directed funding for, for bond funds. If you work a compromise, then you're, you're, you're gonna crush it all. Before we get to that, just wanna make, just so that you're aware, we, we, we do that now. If, if the, if the motion is changed, then I have to schedule a special meeting Friday morning to approve the new documents, the new bond agreement. We can do it if not. I'm Monica. No, I'm Monica, cause I can drop my favorite question, not my favorite, my favorite, my favorite question. It's always. Anyway, so I just wanna make sure you're all engaged, you do have a special meeting. We have a set here, we'll draft a minutes and at eleven thirty five, we'll put it in front of Heather. Anyway, this is just informational, now that the, the motion. Hi. We know we need a motion to authorize you to.
Please speak up, please.
We'll, we'll get there, we're just discussing the motion that I need to make. What we were discussing before is that if the motion is made to change the, the value, we need to schedule a special meeting for Friday in order to have the paperwork executed Friday morning. In order to have the paperwork, uh, executed by the town clerk and then hand delivered to Concord in order to have it there in time. So that's what we were discussing. So now we're just discussing the, the motion, uh, the wording of the motion to approve uh, a two million dollar bond authorization. Could you have specific wording that you used for that?
Thanks, I got it. We won't have that document.
Well, we need a motion to authorize you to forward with the paperwork for a, a two million dollar.
Something to help the, the town administrator complete the paperwork for the two million dollar bond.
Can you further discussion? All in favor? Then we'll, we'll schedule another. And then we have to, we'll have a special meeting Friday morning, eleven thirty. Okay, and that will be a town ball because we, we need to have, we need to have minutes on the record that can be supplied and the town clerk to scan the documents. And then after that, we can deliver them to the bond bank in Concord. Friday, at town hall. Yeah, in the conference room. All right, now we'll get back to our regular. Did you, did you have something to say?
We'll wait for a public call.
Oh, okay, well, that's just redundant pledge, we have to, we have to take care of minutes and concern agenda, then maybe a publication. Uh, I'm gonna ask, I'm sorry, I, I had quite a few items I wanted to check this, so, so we don't hold everybody else up. I haven't seen, and, and we're looking, actually it's not the April twenty third, it's the April sixth. So we'll figure that out.
I made a motion to approve the town hall meeting, April twenty third and fourth. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, yeah, to, to the end of the meeting and then to hold everybody up. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to approve the setting. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public eggplant. Welcome. What's that?
Sorry, I choose to. Um, I am. Um, can we make this fast? We wanted to talk about the possibility of having you all help us get help from the fishing game department regarding Wilson Pond. Um, we are so grateful to Joe because he and his team do a fabulous job, they pick up the trash that we pick up as an association every Sunday night. And they come and get it one evening or whatever, because it's a big help to us and we are the big help to the town because we keep that clean and it can be disgusting, as you may or may not know. But lately you've been getting more crap, like boats don't float. Last year Joe helped us with some heavy metal furniture that we barely dragged over to the beach that people were dumping there. We already have the.
Where's the dumping happening?
I'm sorry.
Where's the dumping typically happening?
Okay, so if you pulled the water chair and you pulled it in to the boat launch.
The, just like that, the boat launch.
Oh, boat launch, I'm so sorry, boat launch.
Is the boat launch a beach?
No, it is not a beach, it's a boat launch, so legally swimming isn't legal at all. So anyway, what we did was a little research, we found these regulations, the regulations from the state fishing game, there are sixteen things on here that people aren't applying by. Uh, and we just wondered, because we know it's the state, can you find some way to help us get them on board to help? Pretty easy request, but it's, it's just, there's trash, there's drinking, there's dogs, there's swimming.
The verbalization is easy and well defined, but the implementation may be more challenging.
Right, it's fishing game, so swimming shall be prohibited with all public projects at service. Uh, owners of consortiums or dogs and properties listed in this, should control the animal by leash at all times, clean up and remove all waste. No person should disclose a household or commercial rubbish, garbage, trash debris, unless there's a trash receptacle.
So, Jack.
One of the things like this, you know, we, people are camping there over the weekend.
So what is, what is the enforcement that comes?
Well, I know the fishing game officers, and they're, if, if it's a public health hazard, then they can shut it down. And our public health officer could shut it down too, but the town owns the property, and so we as individual property owners around Wilson Pond can't, I don't think we can request fishing game to come in and take care of something like town property. The town owns the boat launch, and the boat launch is being used by people, I'm not sure how many of those Swansea residents. And they are, they are doing things which are not right, I mean, I picked up dirty diapers left there on the beach. They, they, it, it, it's, it's not terrible all the time, especially when you pick it up every weekend out through the summer. But it's, it's the other things, you know, there are signs posted that are not lit, no smoking is allowed, pets are allowed, uh, no camping, uh, people been over there overnight. And in there, I'm pleased to read, there are not a lot, hydric sea companies are not allowed to come and take water out of the pond for their hydric sea.
Which is been a point in ten percent.
Instead of your area. I mean, there, there's just things that are happening there that are against the fishing game regulations. So at the very least, we could call their attention to all these things, and either ask them to come meet with us as an association or something like that, talk about it. But we think the request needs to come from town government and not necessarily from the Wilson Pond Association.
We think we're doing our job, and no, this is just a few of the people that come every week and help us pick up. So we've been doing this for two, three years, and as I said, John and his team have been phenomenal, we are very grateful for that help, um, but it's just.
No, Swansea, Swansea Lake has a lake coast program which the town helps fund, the town, the town pays for it, the conservation commissioner pays for it. But a lake coast takes care of making sure the boats that go in the water are affected with, with things. This is not that, this is something else, and we're not asking the town to put, put somebody there, a blue sauce in there to monitor the, the thing. It's just that if, if there is swimming off that beach, it's not supposed to be allowed. If there's swi, if there's trash left there, uh, that's unsafe on Santa, like the dirty diapers I did, things like that, it's not right.
Um, boats.
So we don't, we're, we're at the limit of what we can do, and we're just saying, is there anything else we could work together on, really? These are things you have, I guess you have in mind, and the only thing we could think of was a request from the town to fishing game, uh, you know, just over there in Keen, they're, they're close. To send somebody over and, and talk to us or look at the, look at what's going on on a weekend where there are people out there doing what they're not supposed to be doing. We have no trouble with the fishermen, mostly, most of the time they pick up, it's the people who are camping out there, you know.
Joe, give us an input on, on this. Where, where is the camping?
Right, right there, the boat launch parking area.
I've seen that before, last year there was a RV that was parked there on nine.
So no one's called fishing game?
No, we, we have a. Fishing game was out probably about a year and a half ago, I, I remember the exact, uh, reason, but there's somebody called them out. And, uh, I did have a brief conversation, although I was on the boat and he was on land. And, uh, he said, there's a lot of things that are wrong here, and maybe we start by improving the signage, but nothing ever came of that. So I think, you know, what they're asking for with a little bit of a town assistance or help or phone call, whatever, we might be able to get those wheels turning. Cause I do think it's fishing games' responsibility. Typically, you know, there's designated parking spaces for trailers, right, people come, it's a boat launch, right? So people need to park their trailers, uh, you don't block the boat launch, and a lot of times his car is blocked there. So if somebody wants to take a boat in and out, has to, you know, either, you know, you know, maneuver around vehicles or wait and get somebody to move it. There's, there's just a lot of things there, never mind the, the number of rescues that we do, because a lot of people go out, they buy those, you know, five dollar floats, you know, from the dollar store. Uh, they put their kids on it, they turn around, the wind's blowing off the airport, and the kid's now floating out in, in the water. I saw it once where a kid was floating out, and now somebody's swimming after it, not making any progress getting to it, and that person was not a strong swimmer. A person was swimming behind that person. I was out floating out in the middle of the lake myself, thank God there was another bass boat out there, I got their attention, and I pointed to what was going on. So he went, you know, towards the kids, the swimmers just turned back, I went towards the swimmers, you know, but it could be an ugly situation, you know, and it happens continuously, it really does.
Probably.
And I've been, and I've been coming in front of the board for four years, I've come to what, seventy percent of your meetings?
It's, it's. Listen, mine's strictly for Swansea residents, right?
No, no, it's, it's.
Anybody can come into town and work there?
Yeah.
Yes, for the boat, yes.
For the boats, and, and of course, we're saying that swimming isn't allowed, but there are, there are people that are swimming, we might have to think of some regulations, we, we have to check, we, we do.
Oh, wait a minute, Swansea residents on the construction?
No, nobody, nobody can swim this way.
Oh, I can't look this, cause I can't get this from there.
This is not people's sign, and the signs that the board had done fifteen or twenty years ago, it's been a long time, but nobody sees them. Uh, and then there's another little sign to the left, uh, that says no swimming, but again, nobody. Well, maybe it's easy, but they're talking English.
I was gonna say, is Swansea, have sanctioned that as a swimming hole?
No.
Because I know that, uh, some of the folks that end up over at Swansea Lake that are out of town folks, they send them over, you know, I understood that they say, well, why don't you go over to Wilson Pond and swim? So, you know, I, I, we're getting a lot of people there, and I don't mind people swimming, but somebody's gonna get hurt at some time, or like Mark said, some kid's gonna float out in the middle. But there's no, uh, there's no supervision and, uh, you know, they have to use facilities, if they have to use facilities, they go right out.
Enforcement, I, I think, is fishing game, and, and the thing is that there's, there's no, in, in that piece of paper we gave you, it says that any activities are at your own risk. So anybody swimming there is at their own risk.
We have one, we think, the one thing that.
Except on, not all of that, some, nor yet on there, despite that, and then I think the others are, are not. But it's, it's, uh, it is at your own risk, and the town, I think the town is always, when I talked to Mike Bramley about this, the town has always felt, well, it, we're not calling it a beach. You know, we, we try to get that out of the strategic plan and everything, but it's not, it's a boat launch, it's not a beach. Because if it's a beach, then we have responsibility for who swims there and all that stuff, so the town doesn't want that, we want people to do this at their own risk, but fishing. But fishing game may have other ideas about what, what needs to happen. If they don't want it to happen and it's happening, they could close it. And it seems to me that if there's health concerns, the town can close it. But other than that, I don't know what else the enforcement could be. We're just trying to see if there's some creativity here to solve this problem.
On the swimming thing, it says right where the boat area is. Do they swim off to the side of the boat ramp? Is that legal? Cause it's, the way it's worded.
They swim right down.
There's no, it's not, it's in the proximity of the boat launch.
At all public boat access areas.
This is the boat access area. They have the whole area.
But if you go down from the boat access areas, people can swim down?
No, no, it's, it's no swimming.
Jimmy, the whole thing is an access area. That's the parking for the boat access. That's the parking for the, no, no, the town did not intend for this to be a swimming hole. It's just become one. What's happening is that also the, the bank is getting eroded from use there. The one activity that happens there is the ice fishing derby that, that launches off of there. And that, that's a special activity. And it says in there that they, they need to get a permit for that. Maybe they do.
Should be. Okay, can you add one?
We, we've taken too much of the time. It's supposed to be shorter. We're not expecting you to say any...
If you consider it, and if you have any questions.
So, so when you were asking us to try to reach out to the, the fishing game, set up a meeting with your association so you can sit and talk with them and give your complaints?
Right.
That's what we have to do.
Basically, we want to talk to them about enforcement and stuff like that. So I'm, uh, I'm the president this year of the Wilson Pond Association. And I'm glad to talk with them. They have the secretary, Mark's the vice president, and we're all, we're all working on this. And we're not expecting you to come up with solutions from the town's point of view. I don't think the town has the resources for the need to be, to do this. It's just a, it's an issue. And if we can get fishing game involved somehow, maybe they'll... Thanks.
Thank you.
I think you're the first family in there.
What's that?
Figure it out. If you'd like to, I just wanna, wanna be there and try to have a debate on it. And Lori will reach out to fishing game.
But yeah, thanks to Joe and his team because we really do appreciate it. He does what they do. That basically does it for us.
Thanks.
Joe, we got a, we got a, we got a last name.
No, it's not.
Oh, it is?
It's not something like that.
Good save.
Next man on our agenda. You have the discussion in regard to the mission. Oh, I got a point. Yeah, gotcha. Lillian.
Joe.
How are we doing?
Good. Good evening. Uh, Lillian Chirichella, Swansea. Um, I'm here for two items. I just told you last time. I'm here on behalf of the Swansea Advisory Committee with Grange. And we have a memorandum of understanding to form committee. And what we are here tonight to do, some of us are here, Rob and Irene, uh, to continue as a Grange Town Hall Advisory Committee. So we have a memorandum of understanding that I'll share with the board. Uh, I think we won't have a copy just prior. That's basically what we're asking to do, just to continue as an advisory committee.
What, what we would like to do is just have a, have a separate meeting at, at tonight. I didn't realize that this is what you were bringing forward. To just rea-
One item, I have another.
No, no, I didn't realize this was, was one of the, I'm sorry. But we would like to be able to allocate some time to, to a discussion, but we can't do that tonight. But if you could give us the memo that we play and then we prepare, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Um, the second item, we recently, as a committee, uh, were approached by Marty Rose and his wife Stephanie. And they have a company, uh, MJR Construction Painting. And, uh, they approached the committee because they would like to preserve the Grange Hall by scraping and painting with their own funds. So I'm gonna turn this over to Marty and he can explain this.
Before you, could you just give us a copy of the memo so we have it?
I can, yes.
Cause then we'll have it for, for together.
And Marty has something to leave.
My, my, yes, my. I'm gonna sit here so I don't have to hear you. That's where it's made from out here. Glad you took it. Okay. Good evening, folks. Uh, I, I have a letter. I'll, I'll read it out loud so everybody can hear. On behalf of, uh, MJR Painting, I'm proud to officially present our proposal to donate one hundred percent of the labor and coordinate all materials and generous donations from Sherman Williams and Benjamin Moore. To paint the historic Grange Hall at zero cost to the town of Swansea. We've spoken directly with representatives from both Sherman Williams and Benjamin Moore, and they are enthusiastically on board to support this project by contributing all the necessary painting supplies. MJR Painting will handle every aspect of the work from start to finish under our newly launched community initiative, MJR Painting Forward. This program, beginning with Goldenrod Grange Hall, is our commitment to giving back to the community that supports us. Each year, we will identify a local nonprofit, historic or civic space, donate our time, resources and craftsmanship to enhance it entirely for your charge. We would like to express our gratitude to Ed Merrick for considering us for the opportunity and bringing it to our attention. His outreach and support have helped to shape what we believe will become a meaningful annual tradition in our town. We respectfully ask for the blessing and support of this one devotedness of the month as we move forward with this inaugural Paint Forward project. We're excited to start with Grange Hall and hope to make a lasting impact for years to come. So, so Ed, Ed Owens guarding his own services and he just did a bunch of stuff on his own to help them do some fundraising. And they, they were mentioning how they were in dire need of paint. And he reached out to me on the book of faces there and it was a no brainer. I said to Stephanie, and we drive by it all the time, bring the kids to school. We see it a lot. And I always drive by and I say, that'd be great to paint that place. Cause we do a lot of historic stuff and, uh, I said, that'd be great. I said, I'd love to paint that. And when he brought that, it was no brainer. Me and Stephanie were like, absolutely, we'd love to help. What can we do? I reached out to Sherman Williams, the manager's there. Absolutely no problem. Whatever you need, Marty. Benjamin Moore, Ben Moore rep, absolutely no problem. Whatever you need, Marty. Talked to all my guys, a hundred percent. Whatever you need. Uh, I reached out to a couple of other companies in town that are contractors. They're gonna donate all their resources for any repairs that need to be needed on the exterior of the building. There's some trim marks. You can see in the photos, I, I've identified some spots that definitely need some attention. Uh, we have Jason Laney from IRS Construction and Eric Cangus from Cangus Residential Services are both willing to donate all their time. And I'll, I'll get the materials free. I'm pretty good at doing that type of stuff. I have to put a penny on there for a child now because the, the new invoice system will let me do it without, so it says a penny for a child. We'd love to, if you, if this is all cool, we do let them dispose of the rest of the time. It should only take us about a week to do.
One week, Joe?
How many guys?
I got guys. I got five. I can bring guys in from Boston or I can, and I, and I got eight, nine guys over here. So.
All right. Does your company let paint certified?
In Nass, yes. And I have Jason Laney who's letting paint.
And what, what, if Jason Laney, what is his role?
He's, uh, construction. He's gonna come on and do all the repairs.
He is letting paint certified?
He's over here.
We, we did have, uh, someone call O'Shea in regard to work that's being done on one of the town buildings.
Okay.
We're obviously very...
Yeah?
And, and they were compliant, but regardless, somebody called it in and obviously this isn't, it's certainly invisible as town hall.
Okay.
We gotta be careful of that. Is there, um, you're bonded?
I, I have more insurance than I know what to do with.
Are you, are you, we're kind of never, you were...
I, I live right across the road. I bought a house here three years ago. We moved from Massachusetts. Uh, we love town. We love it. We have the schools.
La Parte Metis.
What's that?
La Parte Metis.
Uh, she's from Dorchester and I'm where I was born. Oh, yeah. I'm Dorchester, yeah.
Yeah, we just recently brought out buildings for painting. We only have one pole.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't aware.
I, I got, the only, the only something I have is like, as old as that building is in the world, I would not want pressure wash.
You don't wanna do a soft wash again?
No, that, that, the siding is in really bad shape.
You think so?
Yeah.
I thought it was great.
Yeah, everything else, everything else in the paper, as long as it let paint certified, but I, I would shy away from pressure washing it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
How do you refuse something like this? This is a, Angel, my list of... Very generous.
It, it's about a thirty thousand dollar price.
No doubt. Can't thank you enough.
We'll, we'll do whatever we can to work with the town and make sure, and you, we'll do whatever we can to make sure we do.
I would be your partner.
Yeah, perfect. If anybody, if we get our blessing, we'll work with Joe and do whatever we're gonna do with documentation and make sure everybody has what they need.
Well, it sounds, sounds like, or at least reads like the nods that I've seen to my left and right.
You know what? You know the golden buzzer? Hey.
Well, we don't have to, I do numbers with this one. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
But Lori, you go, you said we asked each other Nick with Lori and Joe.
Sure.
And they'll give us progress reports.
You have my card?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You have my card?
Yes.
Who else needs my card? Thank you, Marty. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
No, this is, at this point, the motion to you and the motion to... Right now, it's just my consensus. I want to do a Joe tutorial. I do. I don't want you to. Joe, twenty twenty-five road improvement contract award.
Yeah, we're just requesting authorization over the contract for all states constructioning for the, uh, two thousand twenty-five paving. Which consists of, uh, West Street, Forest Dam and Postback Street. All states has obviously been a little better on it. Uh, they've done their paving the last two or three years in a row. They are usually a little better.
What's the, uh, what's the amount?
That you didn't have the, it's, uh...
Lori, do you have the, the bid number on all state?
I think it's in the...
I know, I get it.
Two nine three change?
Three one five.
Yes.
Do you want me to say two, two nine five?
That would be fine.
I know for work, the two, twenty twenty-five road improvement contract all state, they totaled by two hundred ninety-five thousand.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All favor.
I agree. Am I reading this right? It's a seven hundred dollar difference?
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, they were blocking on it.
When you count up those, those numbers like that and seven hundred dollar differences, it's pretty wild.
We're gonna jump up to, uh, some shit. We're looking at the contract, the proposed contract with KCS Architect and Gordon Services. I know you weighed in with some comments. Lori, I submitted some. Is there anything else?
No, when I talked to Cody today, he's finalizing. He, he doesn't take any acceptance to it. Told me as far as, cause he's switching insurance companies. The date, I think he said was gonna be June twenty-third. He was switching to a local insurance company here. That's when he provided the insurance documents. He should, um, by tomorrow, should have an email off, uh, but he doesn't have any, uh, any issues with it. I explained to him, you need to look a little bit closer. I explained to him, we'd be changing the number to what his bid was. And also we'll be removing the verbiage that we already, the board already agreed that he wouldn't have to get, uh, separate quotes from his subcontractors.
He's got a number, he's got a...
Yeah, he's got a number, exactly.
He goes over it on him.
Exactly.
Unless we have changed orders.
Yes.
Okay. Mark and Jim, did you have anything other than the comments that, that Joe made? Anything else?
Good.
Ed, did Cody indicate whether he submitted to his legal team or whether he's just...
He's reviewing it himself. He said it's a, a standard A, A, high A boilerplate that he's familiar with. He just wants to double check some of the language.
And Cordell, get back to you. You forwarded it.
He started, he started the one, but not, maybe he's on vacation.
Okay, but it's, it's primarily ninety percent, ninety, whatever, ninety, ninety percent of the boilerplate, so, okay.
What's needed?
What's that?
What's needed?
It's just a discussion. Just to acknowledge that the contract was submitted by KCS on, uh, on Monday. And it's being reviewed by Gordon Services and our, and, and Joe and Lori and our attorney, Cordell Johnston. And for you, I think that's...
Oh, yeah, I have a card in my home. Card in my home. And I have a request, uh, reference, uh, my self budget and some funds that are needed for drainage on West Street and Eaton Road. As you're aware, the, the paving and outside labor through budget cuts was lowered. Uh, the paving was initially at three hundred and thirty thousand. It got lower down to three hundred thousand. I can't remember the exact number on the outside labor and rental. That got lowered, but that got lowered as well. So as far as the West Street project, you know, I discussed it with the board that, and I've also discussed with the sidewalk committee. That we're gonna be removing the sidewalk on West Street, broken up sidewalk. That just does nothing but trap water right now. We're gonna be paving the road a little bit wider than what was there to give adequate space for pedestrians.
And we're gonna strike it?
Yes, uh, strike a little fog, yes. And then install four catch basins. I'm working on easements right now. One is with Lesser to discharge the water in his detention pond. Uh, the other is with Mark James, was it?
No.
Perry, Mark, Mark Perry, yes. And Mark Perry, you agreed that he will be signing the easement. Uh, create a detention pond in the corner of his property to drain two catch basins. And because of that detention pond on his property, we're gonna, he would, would possibly impact his ability to create a septic system. So as part of that, we would extend a sewer line onto his property to eliminate that. Uh, the other issue that you've been working on here, Eaton Road, I'm sure if you drive to the end of Eaton Road, railroad streets, especially in the winter time, there are lots of puddles on the road. Splashes, rocks, salt, debris onto the neighbors' yards. I've had numerous complaints. Next week, we're gonna be installing another catch basin to help alleviate that. But the road is settled. It's kind of a trough that does not allow the water to get to the catch basins and drain into the ground. So it requires some paving. So in the past, I've done this before. Then we have a, I have a surplus left over for my self budget of fifty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. I'm just requesting for the board to be able to spend forty-four thousand dollars of that money on drainage improvements for West Street. That goes with the end of the paving project and then the drainage and paving improvement for Eaton Road.
Can you give me more examples again? I'm concerned you're doing four catch basins on West Street. Mark Perry agreed.
Mark Perry's agreed to, uh, an easement for a detention pond for the catch bases to drain into. And then there are two other catch basins that will drain into the Lesser property. Eaton Road is the addition of a, another catch basin, and then a paving repair.
And does that mean, like, where on Eaton Road? The number, the number on Eaton Road doesn't even.
The number on Eaton Road is approximately twelve thousand dollars and thirty-two thousand for the West Street improvements. And that's still, we still have a pretty big stockpile of salt, salt pit right now, but that would still leave an eleven, somewhat thousand dollar buffer for we have a bad, no record of the sand for.
You guys want to do a little of that?
Yep.
Great. Have a fight consensus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the next would be the Carver.
All right, let's go through, is that this?
The blood's right there, did I? You got it right, yeah.
I'm sorry, Lori. All right, how about?
Okay, so, the roof, Alice's comments about the roof desperately leaking over the front of the building. The roof does need to be repaired, not dust, but it's not leaking, the shingles aren't falling off, but they're a little bit weathered. I actually, I was able to get a roofer to go up there today and give me an estimate, it should be coming in my email, to see what it's like. Possible, the DPW crew could do that one in the fall, but it's starting to get a little bit big in size for, for the crew to be doing. But we'll take a look at what the number is there.
So it's just the front bit, probably?
Yeah, the front, when we were up there. Yeah, kinda like I call it, the east wing, as you drive up, it's the portion of the building that runs parallel to thirty-two. It does need to be replaced, but it's not emergency, the roof's not leaking, it's not a safety issue. It's just old shingles that are starting to come that need to be replaced. I would say it doesn't, if we get to a five-month rate, if it has to wait till next year, it's not the end of the world.
So not worried about.
We're forgetting about, he said.
Yes, he was actually up there today.
Not worried about the underlying, right, at this point?
No, we won't know until we, we pull it out, but, yeah, there's, yeah, there's nothing leaking. Maybe a little bit of plywood, but it didn't seem too significant. When I talked to the roofer, he was actually up there today, he'll have a better idea. Peeling paint on the windowsills and grounds outside, that's something that the DPW crew can work on, same thing, it's not significant. It's like on some of our buildings, we made some improvements on. I recently talked with Alice about heating all the rooms. When I asked her about that, there's heating all the rooms, and she said that sometimes last winter it was working, and sometimes it wasn't. I pointed out to her that it was not working at the time it ran to my attention. So there's, don't, don't know what's. We, we had, she called a couple times last winter, and Swansea Oil went up and worked, worked a couple issues. So like I told her in the past, it ran to my attention, but there is, there's not a need to add any heat to any roofs or anything like that.
Is it hot water, or is it steam?
I don't know. I think it's hot water. I think, yeah, I think it's hot water, yeah, I don't believe it's. Floors, she brings up the floors, and the same in the area by that east building. Once again, I, we toured it, Jimmy, Lori and I toured it, when we met with her. It's a typical of an old building, the floors are, I call them, she says, very bouncy. There's, it's typical of an old building, there's some gift to them. I went back and went in the basement, so that, one of those floors you can't get to, it's a crawl space. From what I can see inside, does not appear to be any rot, does not appear to be a safety issue. She agreed with that. Floor slanted, it's not completely level. But to replace those floors would be a significant project that would have to be done by time and labor because it's too difficult to come up with a number on about being able to tear it up. You physically can't get underneath it to inspect it further, but.
What does she mean by almost?
She said the part of the floor that risen up, I don't know, I didn't see any evidence of that. After inspecting it, she agreed. Yeah, I didn't see any sign of that. The floor, it is typical of an old building, I mentioned before, the floors have a little bit of gift, they're not as firm as something like this. But what she's doing in there is not a significant amount of weight, or that somebody's gonna fall through the floor. So we did discuss that a little bit, she agreed. Obviously, little, little children need to take care of the floor swamps, probably a three percent pitch in one area. Without redoing all the floors, there's nothing can be done about that.
Doors and windows?
Yes, both those floors, yes. So doors and windows, Angel's gonna work on that French door. It's not a big rush, but there, they took the ramp down accessing the door. So he's gonna see what he can do to fix the door, but they need to build their porch. We've reminded Alice that she needs to get with, with Chris from Code Enforcement. She can't just simply build a ramp up there, that somebody's found, there's ADA compliance. She needs to go through the, the Code Enforcement Department about that. There are three windows in there that are, that are difficult to close and latch. Once again, they're all, I'm gonna have Angel take a look at them and see if they can be fixed.
These original or replacements?
Doubt they're original. They look to be some type of replacement, but they're still old. They're just very.
Just need to let paint, that's all?
Nah, I think they're vinyl of some sort. Very difficult to move up and down, and really can't get latched, but I'm gonna see what, what the group can do as far as that. They, they may need to be replaced. The outdoor water spigot at back, that, that's something old that was cut off. I don't know if we cut it off, it's not working. We're gonna see if we can find where the line goes to. But I have a feeling that the reason why the line was cut off is because it freezes in the winter time, and it's old plumbing, so. We'll probably have to look at running some PEX line, put some drains on, if, if there is a need for, for spigot out there. She said she'd like to have it out there. Once again, it's nothing that I see as a safety issue. Foundation, the old basement of the windows, they had a little damage. We worked on that quite a bit. A little bit more needs to be done there. There are a lot of groundhogs up there. This year's groundhog, we haven't caught any, and have a hard trap lately. Last year, we were catching animals on a daily basis and having hard traps up there. That's slowed down, but there are, visibly, there are groundhogs all over. And I don't have the answer as far as mitigating that. Septic system was just recently pumped, and I have a call into the company that does inspection.
How often do you pump it, though?
What's that?
How often do you pump that?
Depends on the use, but it should probably be pumped every other year with, with the daycare in there. But it has been pumped.
It's a good-sized tank over there, right?
Just tool.
Tool, tool.
And then I gotta call to the company that, that inspects the system, and I can find out a little bit more about that.
And they're gonna tell us the details, family?
No, it's a new system, so we shouldn't hear that, but it's a pretty loud, I'm not sure what the design is. My Jasmine used to always deal with it, I haven't anything to do with it, but it hasn't, it just was pumped last Saturday. And then last, Alice brings the road up, the road definitely could use some paving, and once again, it's not a safety issue. It was, for whatever reason, that road, CIP stuff was started before I got involved with the road projects, but for whatever reason, Simonton Lane was left off. I'm sure that most people probably thought it was a private road, and not a classified road, but it actually is a classified road. It should be shimmed and overlaid, and it's approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to do that. It's something I can look at adding into CIP, and, and if sometimes when the projects come under budget, it leaves money available to use in paving. So it is something that, that would be nice to get to, but once again, it's not a safety issue.
When you say overlay, put a layer on it?
You ship, you drag, shim, you fill in all the voids, and then you step back and put it into a pot load on it. But structurally, it's.
And you guys submitted that as twenty-five grand?
Twenty-five grand. And like I said, assuming that the reason why it was missed, is they probably thought it was a private road. It didn't include it like, like Town Hall Park and lots of others, that don't see, I think, the roads, the park, and all, here's the law. So.
All right. Do you wanna hang around for the non-public?
It's up to you.
Up to you?
If I'm needed, if I'm not needed.
Take a seat. The formation. Establishment of the Lucy Carpenter Trust Committee. So this is the one that Richard Charamelli talked to us about last week. And there's a, there's, the committee will be three members. A member of the Board of Trustees, or the designated Human Resource, and so. Human Service Coordinator, and a member of the Board of Selectmen, or the designated. And I understand that Mark has jumped the chance to be our designated, our, uh, Selectman.
Jumped on it, jumped over it, so.
All right.
I tried to offer my assistance, but he said, "No, Jimmy, I want this."
Okay, do you want to just read the motion in regards to the establishment?
I move to establish a Lucy Carpenter Trust, or the site under control, received by the Surgeons' Guard, if needed. Needs, assessments, and fund distribution of the trust funds outlined in the Lucy Carpenter Trust Oversight Policy Policy Guide. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You were there last week, weren't you? You can fill Jay in on that.
He lost it up. Is, uh, is that, can you say that you accepted the guidelines that was presented as well?
Lori has drafted a set of guidelines that the committee itself will, will have to work on.
Fund-wise, you mean the money, distributing, that was.
So criteria, criteria for.
Yeah.
Somebody's application is also for.
Yeah.
And one of the questions I have is, are we working off of what came in the year before to know how, how much money is available to be allocated? Is that in your, I didn't get a chance to read your recommendation. So anyway, it'll, it'll be worked out. Lori's put a lot of time into it. And so you, so you got that we, we formed, got that motion, formed the committee, and that Mark is gonna be the select board representative?
Is that part of, is that part of the?
Mark or Bell? You won't say, I don't know.
I can run a motion. I'll make a motion that we designate Mark or Bell to be the board's representative of the Lucy Carpenter Trust.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now it's moving on to the Perpetual Care Trust Policy.
I can't. I don't remember who gave this, maybe someone handed over it.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Because I think there was also some mention in the information last week that we need to go a little more.
Okay, actually, this is what Steve, I can, he can start the moment.
Okay, let's put it out for the twenty-eighth. Your motion, I believe, is.
So it was a free table, policy, and cemetery.
I move to accept the recognition of Arizona Accession Services for the following. A paving application for twenty twenty-five. M two forty, L thirty-seven, M two twenty, L six. M two two seven, L twenty-eight, slash zero, slash. B three, zero, dash forty-one. M two five six, L thirteen, slash zero, slash zero, slash zero. M two one eight, L seven one, dash zero, dash zero, dash zero. And M two two seven, L two eight, slash zero, slash B three, six and all, five. Second.
Okay, so we already reviewed these, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have something on the work process? Oh, click up on the, on the twenty-eighth, it'll be that much older.
Well, the twenty-eighth's getting deeper.
I know, my left, my left little limb. Wait, it's not twenty-eighth, it's twenty-fifth, right? I gave it off.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah, it's twenty-fifth. Last shot of public input. Nothing? All right, now unless you have any questions for us.
Don't.
So we're getting moving on the, on the official game.
I've got, I'm gonna meet with Lori tomorrow, and I want to talk about something, so I wanna take your time off, but I'll talk to you in one.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, where are we going on?
C.
Okay.
C.
Make them off the line, public, and then I will see. James, we're going into non-public, so you get to end tonight.
All right, sounds good.
You got a call roll?